That was wonderful, thank you.
Thank you.
And that was Ava Sonowski, right? Thank you Ava.
Thank you.
Beautiful. Let's hear it for Ava. Okay, I would like to call this meeting of the Temecula City Council to order and we've already thanked Ava Sonowski for our beautiful music. This evening we're gonna have our invocation from Pastor Dave Cope of Calvary Chapel Bible Fellowship. Hi there. And Councilmember Jeff Comachero, would you please do the flag salute for us? So if you'll stand, please.
Happy to.
I'm doing the flag?
You're gonna do the invocation first.
I get to start with prayer?
You get to start with prayer.
Let's do that. Father God in heaven, we thank you so very much for the provisions that you make and all the people that have risen up to serve one another. We pray for your blessing upon this meeting tonight and those that have been called to serve this community as they seek for the interest of those that live here, that work here, that have business here. God, would you lay your hand upon each and every one as they seek to work through, resolve, and discuss important issues for this community that affect our children, our families, our loved ones, all the way to the elderly and the homeless. God, we pray that your hand would be upon our ears to hear and our mouths that when we speak, that we would seek unity for a common cause and in the end is good for all people. So have your hand upon them as you bless them. We thank you, in Jesus' name. Mayor?
Please remain standing and as we honor America, if you would put your hand over your heart and say with me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. And could we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Kermit Chero?
Here.
Councilmember Niggar?
Good evening.
Councilmember Ron is absent. Councilmember Stewart?
Here.
Mayor Edwards.
Present. We're missing Councilmember Ron tonight. He is on business. Okay, so now we're moving on to presentations and proclamations. I have one this evening that is so rare. We have a longtime city employee who worked for 23 years and never called in sick one time. 23 years, perfect attendance, which is absolutely amazing. Well, Matt Wycheck, front and center, please come up and let us honor you for your 23 years. I'm gonna have Councilmember Comachero bring this to you.
Absolutely incredible. When I think of 23 years and everything that you did, and I think a lot of people don't realize that you've helped to maintain our parks all that time. And before that, we won't hold this against you, it says that you even developed and maintained half of Marietta's parks and Menifee Lakes parks too before you came onboard with the city in 1994. So I said, "We won't hold that against you, but we were so glad to get you onboard and we snapped you up from the county." So absolutely incredible. After incorporation in 1989, so we retained you as a contractor at that time, it says, and superintendent for all of our parks, and I think we had one park, at least the Ronald Reagan Sports Park, right? So we hired you and have kept you, and then for the next 23 years, not one time did you call in sick, and now we're up to 41 gorgeous parks in Temecula. So, you know, we know you're having a few challenges right now, but we wanted you to know that your city family is here and we wanted to recognize you for those 23 years, absolutely an amazing record. And so everybody's wearing their purple, you know, matte bracelets this evening, and Councilmember Comachero has a special plaque for you. 23 years, everybody. So thank you, Matt, for amazing service.
I'd like to read this, if I may. City of Temecula Special Appreciation Award, 23 years perfect attendance record, presented to Matt Wycheck, Maintenance Supervisor of Parks, in grateful recognition for your commitment to public service and dedication to the city of Temecula since 1994, and it's dated today. And I'll tell ya, this says some nice things, but it doesn't come close.
No.
And you've just been a gem in this city, and we wish you nothing but the best, my friend.
Yeah, yeah.
Get a nice picture. Is anybody else up here even close to 23 years?
Yeah.
No. Absolutely amazing. Thank you, Matt.
We have another bittersweet presentation to offer, and also to somebody who really does not like the limelight, does not like being called to the front, so we're certainly gonna call him to the front. And so Chief Kubel, would you please come down and let us honor you this evening? You know, Chief Kubel's been with the Temecula Police Department, you know, on and off for many years, and we always say, "Temecula, we have great police chiefs," and no exception with Chief Kubel, absolutely part of the family, and, you know, we get so used to them and so accustomed and so spoiled, and then Riverside County Sheriff whips them back and promotes them, and so they're no longer within our, you know, within our bailiwick, but they're always within our family. So I have a proclamation for you, and you're just gonna have to stand there and take it while I read it, okay? City of Temecula Proclamation. Whereas Police Chief Jeff Kubel has served with the Riverside County Sheriff's Department for 27 years, including serving as Temecula's Police Chief since 2013, and whereas Chief Kubel has served many roles within the Riverside County Sheriff's Department, including Deputy Sheriff, Sergeant, Lieutenant, Captain, Temecula Police Chief, and has now been appointed to Chief Deputy with countywide oversight of the Sheriff's Court Services, the Coroner's Public Administrator's Office, Personnel and Recruiting, and the Ben Clark Training Center. You better get some bigger tennis shoes, you're gonna be running. And whereas Chief Kubel began his career in Temecula in the early 1990s and is the first Patrol Deputy to work his way up through each rank at the Police Department, which included serving on Temecula's problem-oriented policing team and as a School Resource Officer, then promoting to Patrol Sergeant, Patrol Traffic, and Investigations Lieutenant, and finally as Chief of Police for the past four years. And whereas, under his direction and leadership, Chief Kubel has increased the effectiveness of the Temecula Police Department by implementing several active shooter trainings, developing and expanding homeless outreach team, adding 10 officers with implementation of Measure S., and increasing strategic law enforcement activities citywide to maintain the highest level of public safety, particularly in the face of challenging state legislation, and we're talking about AB 109 and Prop 47. And whereas, Chief Kubel was successful at keeping our community safe and preserving the quality of life the citizens of Temecula enjoy while demanding a high standard of conduct and professionalism among his officers. And whereas, Chief Kubel increased communication and transparency directly with citizens through social media and established an exemplary leadership style throughout the Temecula Police Department with strong community relations and police support during a national time of difficult police and community relations in other cities. Now I therefore, on behalf of the City Council of the City of Temecula, hereby proclaim August 8th to be Jeff Kubel Day in the City of Temecula. I'm gonna ask you to say a few words while I walk this down, and I get to give this to you myself.
Okay. Thank you very much. As you all know, I'm not a big fan of being up at the microphone, but for all my assignments and my career, this is gonna go down for sure as the highlight of my career. It was a dream to be able to start as a patrol officer here and end up being your police chief. I love the city. I love the leaders of the city and the team that I was a part of, and it was just, it was amazing. So, thank you.
So you have to come back every day, every year on this day, and stand here and, you know, let us do this again.
Madam Mayor, after the photos, may I say something?
Sure. He's so tall, too.
I ask first.
Can you get us in the same picture? You didn't, you know? You don't be a stranger.
So, first off, Chiefy, and I would email him like that every now and then, you know, 'cause sometimes you gotta keep it light. Am I mistaken, or is your family here today?
Yes.
Okay. And you're a grandpa, aren't you?
Yes.
So I'm assuming those are your grandkids?
Well, four of them are.
Okay. I love it.
The littlest ones.
Okay, I got it, got it, got it. And, you know, I was astonished to find out you were a grandpa. I mean, which just shows you how quick the time went. And anyway, it's just, time went real fast since you joined us. But I just wanted to say a few things, and I don't think I'm gonna embarrass you, and the mayor said a few other things.
I think it's fine if you embarrass him.
Well, you know, working under the auspices of Prop 47 and I think, what, AB 109, has made it very difficult for every doggone city to uphold public safety. It's been very, very difficult. Of course, our citizens went ahead and passed Measure S., they saw the wisdom behind it, and so we got ahead of it before it got to be a real problem. But there's something I wanna mention, and I think it bears mention as the sun sets on your being chief here in Temecula, 'cause I think it's real important. You know, over the past four years, we have constantly been in the top 20 cities in the nation for being one of the safest when it comes to violent crime. I think in, I think it was four years ago, we were number 20, and then I think we made it to number 15. I think a couple of years ago, we were five, and at one point, we were number two, okay? And that's remarkable in and of itself. That's just remarkable when you think about all of the cities in the United States of America. But when you also consider that the aforementioned AB 109 and Prop 47, which are unique to California, when you also consider that Temecula is a tourist destination, that we have tens of thousands of people coming here from all over the region, which has started a $750 million a year tourism industry, just to give you the gravity of how much tourism we have. They come to visit Old Town. They come to our regional mall. They pass through Temecula to visit the wine country. And of course, we have, some would say, many would say, the most, the number one rated Indian gaming resort in the United States as well, in Pechanga. When you take all those into account, you and your team managed to keep us in the top 20 safest cities in the nation. I cannot tell you the gravity of that, and so publicly, I know my colleagues agree, I just wanted to thank you and let you just know how you and the team you fostered, okay? Because you'd be the first to say it, wasn't you? I know that, I know that, and just the team you put together have done a remarkable job for the citizens of Temecula. So I personally thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Don't go away so fast. Certainly, I echo what Mike said. It's been a remarkable run, not just for you and your career, but certainly for the city and for what you've demonstrated in terms of keeping the public safe. I've been here since almost the beginning, and we've had, I don't know how many, four or five police chiefs. You would know better than I, how many we've had? Seven? Yeah, I've been here too long. And we've had some very good ones, and I don't mean to slight anybody, but far and away, you've been the best. And I mean that.
Thank you.
Very sincerely. It's a unique relationship that a police chief has with the City Council, and some have done beautifully at that and some could've used a little improvement. You topped them all, and we will miss you. Lisa, back there, we wish you nothing but the best. We all look forward to working with you as well. We know you have some pretty big shoes to fill, but you'll fill them. So, Chief, congratulations, and I know we'll run into each other down the road in both of our capacities, and I look forward to that as well. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Stu?
Well, being the new guy, I really only had six months with you, so you set the bar really high for Lisa, so, and I'm sure she's capable of keeping up the level of service that you have created, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
We've all taken a huge, we have a huge sense of pride in the fact that Temecula's grown to be 114 or so thousand people, and yet we still feel like a small community. And even though we have large casino operation, we've got so much retail, we've got the mall, we've got wine country, we've got Old Town with tourism, so we have a lot of traffic in and out of town, and we have a lot of reasons for people to come and visit and, you know, do mischief in town, and you have managed to do absolutely a fantastic job. And not only that, but the way that you have trained or worked with your officers to work with us, to work with city staff, and to deal with our residents. We know that our officers patrol within their zones, and because of that, they've gotten to know the neighborhoods where they work, and they know the people that live there and the cars that belong there and the businesses that belong there, and that just adds to the city's safety. And I can tell you personally that I have texted you any time of the day or night, and I get an immediate response saying, you know, "We'll be right there. If I see anything or have anything to report," you've been, you know, your response has been immediate, knowing that you're calling your officers and saying, "We'll get right on it," you know, "Or that doesn't sound right, you know, we'll be right there." So, and I know that I wasn't the only one doing that. I know that staff did it, I know council members do it, and I also know that our residents do it and they get a response. And so the legacy and the example that you've set for, you know, those who have come behind you and those who've had a chance to work for you is just amazing. So we will benefit by that. And I met with Lisa this morning, and, you know, we've known her for a number of years working in Temecula, so it's gonna be great. And you can't be a stranger. So every year on this day, you have to come back and visit, at the very least. And so family members, thank you for, you know, loaning us, and he's gonna be busy. My goodness, the list of responsibilities that we've read, but you knew that job was dangerous when you took it.
Yeah.
So, you know, we love you and wish you all the best.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to congratulate Jeff Kubel as well, but before he heads out, could we have him come back up to the podium real briefly?
Oh, sure.
And introduce to the community our new police chief? Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you. It's my pleasure to be able to hand off what is a very precious thing to me to Captain Lisa McConnell, who's worked here as a lieutenant for the last three years and as a deputy before that, so Captain Lisa McConnell.
Thank you.
He's still trying to get away, you see?
Trying to. You need to stand right here next to me. I did truly learn from the best, and as you can see, I have some big shoes to fill.
Figuratively, literally.
Right. And I truly feel like I've always been part of the family, the time I was a deputy out here and the time that I've been a lieutenant here, so I feel blessed to be a more involved family member. So I look forward to working with everyone and with our community.
So welcome and, you know, farewell, but you're not going too far, and we know where you are. So, thank you. All right. Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comments?
We do, Madam Mayor. We have two public comments on non-agendized items.
All right. A total of 30 minutes is provided for members of the public to address the City Council on items that appear within the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. If the speaker chooses to address the City Council on an item listed on the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda, a request to speak form may be filled out and filed with the City Clerk prior to the City Council addressing public comments and the consent calendar. Once the speaker is called to speak, please come forward and state your name for the record. For all public hearing or council business items on the agenda, a request to speak form may be filed with the City Clerk prior to the City Council addressing that item. Each speaker is limited to five minutes. All right, could we have the first speaker, please?
Madam Mayor, the first speaker is Lee Mark, to be followed by Mark Broderick.
Good evening, sir.
Well, anyway, my name is Mr. Leland Mark. I'm originally from Woodland Hills, Calabasas area. I moved there in 51. Never, and we were the 10th best city in the country. I'm sorry. My brother-in-law brought the chokehold to LAPD. Is that my fault? I am pro-police, but I wanna tell you that this city is turning into the city of Bell. You had a problem that only was for 18 years that exists. I got flung off the bus, hit my head on the floor, became unconscious, 'cause you use buses that are not made for being buses. And your streets, you know about them, because I called a man named Mr. White, who's never returned my calls, and I retired at 50 years old. I'm a very successful businessman. When I would get a message, I would check my messages three times. If I couldn't get back to them, I'd have my secretary or my accountant get back to the people. Mr. White has not returned it on one day, on two days, on three days, on four days. He should be fired, or he should be given days off without pay. Once you hit somebody, pardon my French, in the crotch like that, they become aware of this. Now, if you had a problem with this intersection at Inez and Winchester for only 18 years, if you had to work in the private sector, you all would starve to death. I was always in charge of my own destiny and those of my employees who I had working for me for 25 years, that's all. And I know how to run a city, not like some of you people who allow a very dangerous corner to exist for only 18 years. Is that more than enough time to fix that intersection? On the eve of my 72nd birthday, I get flung off the bus, don't even know what happened 'cause I became unconscious. The next thing I knew, I'm at food for less, and the guy goes, the bus driver goes, "Can you get up?" I said, "Yeah, when pigs fly." I couldn't even move. And you people, whomever are in charge of this and writes these things off, knew there was a problem for only 18 years. Come on! If you had to work for a living, you guys would starve to death. And that's all I got to say. And I hope whoever was in charge of that is proud of themselves, and when they go to dinner, tell their wives and kids that they do nothing and get a salary. And why you allow these guys to pave these streets in such a horrendous way, they're dangerous to the public. You know, you guys brag that you've been here since 1989, you're doing a terrible job. I bet you you know when payday is and when your vacations are. Enough said?
Mr. Mark, your time is up.
Yeah, that's all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Mark Broderick.
Mr. Broderick, how are you?
See, I hope I don't sound like a party pooper after all that public safety talk. I'm here to talk about the homeless criminals that are living in our riverbeds. Last week on Thursday, my wife and my 10-year-old granddaughter left the house and returned back within a few minutes, and apparently somebody was watching. They went into our backyard, broke into our garage, and ransacked it, and being unable to get into the house through the garage, they went around to the back of the house. And my wife and my granddaughter had come home, and they ended up face-to-face with a homeless guy trying to get in through our sliding glass door. This is not an isolated incident. If you're unfortunate like me to live near a riverbed, there are lots of criminals, and they are scoping out our neighborhoods, and they are stealing. I had an officer come and talk to me, and he was telling me about an encampment that they had just cleaned up near a thrift store over by In-N-Out Burger. And a few days later, we pulled into CVS by Jedediah Smith Road, and some homeless had run in there, grabbed all kinds of merchandise, and ran out. And there were unmarked police cars driving around, but one of my neighbors was there also, and his grandson's bicycle was stolen from in front of the store. So he, maybe not wisely, went into the riverbed to look around, and he ran across no more than 10 individuals amongst the overgrowth. You know, we had a lot of rain last year, and those riverbeds are overgrown. I've been told by the city that there's a jurisdictional problem in the riverbed. Riverside County has jurisdiction, and I'm very irritated that we know, the residents, that there's criminals living in our riverbeds, and they're preying upon us and businesses, and we can't go in and get them. We...
I need you to summarize, Mark, 'cause your time's up.
Okay, we voted a tax increase, and that was to protect the citizens. That was for safety. I read about all these millions we're gonna spend on parks, and I would say, "Hold off on the money for the parks. Protect us. Protect the citizens." That's your number-one priority. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. All right. No further comments. So I have City Council reports next. Anyone? Anybody in the queue?
Yeah.
Stu?
Okay. So, two things. My Rotary Club does this thing called the Idol Event, the Boys and Girls Club Idol Event. It's August 27th, and it's gonna be a great night. It's gonna be at Pechanga. It's from 3 until 6. It's all 80s music. We've got a professional band that's gonna play with the kids, and it should be a great evening. It's only $15 a ticket for an adult, so I encourage anybody to get out and support, 'cause the money does go to support the Boys and Girls Club, so. And then second, two weeks ago, I post, or I made comments about the panhandling situation here in Temecula. And so the next morning, I decided to basically summarize it and put it on my Facebook page, and it ended up getting like 38,000 views, which was absolutely mind-blowing to me. It got shared over 215 times, and there were like 160 comments, and surprisingly, I only had two negative comments out of the 100 and almost 60 comments. And so that, to me, told me how serious of an issue the citizens of Temecula thinks this is. And don't be fooled, we are doing a lot. We pretty much know every single person who's in those riverbeds, and if they've got any kind of felonies, if they've got any kind of criminal background, we either can rearrest them if they're violating their parole, or we can keep our eyes really close on them. So we are doing a lot despite what you heard here tonight, and could we do more? Of course. You know, but we are handcuffed by the law, and the law says if they're not breaking the law, we can't do anything about it. And being homeless is not against the law. But rest assured, we really are putting a lot of effort into trying to solve this issue and try to keep this city as beautiful as it is, so thank you.
Thank you, Stu. Okay, then, we can move on to the consent calendar. All matters listed under consent calendar are listed under consent. All matters listed under consent are considered to be routine, and all will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the city council request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Item number one, waive reading of standard ordinances and resolutions. Number two, approve the action minutes of July 25th. Number three, approve list of demands. Number four, approve city treasurer's report as of June 30, 2017. Number five, approve the purchase of two BMW police motorcycles for the Temecula Police Department from Powersports Unlimited DBA BMW Motorcycles of Escondido. Number six, approve the Second Amendment to the agreement with Quality Code Publishing for Municipal Code Services. Number seven, ratify standard agreement with the State of California to utilize the services of the Office of Administrative Hearings. Number eight, approve plans and specifications and authorize the solicitation of construction bids for the Temecula Park and Ride PW 06-09. Number nine, approve a transfer of funds and award a construction contract to RJ Noble Company, Inc. for the pavement rehabilitation program Winchester Road PW 10-13. Number 10, accept improvements and file the notice of completion for the citywide sidewalk project Inez Road between Pabba Road and Portraits Lane PW 15-12. And number 11, approve the agreement between City of Temecula and Red Hawk Community Association for sidewalk maintenance and portions of Red Hawk Community. Right, so I need a motion.
Move the consent calendar. Second?
Second. And we have four ayes with Mayor Pro Tem Ron absent, and I will now turn the city council meeting. I'm going to take a recess and move to Temecula Community Services District.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to call this meeting of the Temecula Community Services District to order. Madam Clerk, no need to take the roll. We all know that Mayor Pro Tem Ron is not with us tonight. Everybody else is. Do we have any public comment tonight? Thank you. We have two items, I suppose, under the consent calendar. Item 12, approve the action minutes of July 25, 2015. And item 13, approve a sponsorship agreement with the Temecula Valley Women's Club for use of the community recreation center kitchen and multipurpose room.
Move approval.
We have a motion. We have a second?
Second.
Okay, then, please cast your votes. And that motion passes 4-0 with Dr. Ron absent. And Mr. Hawkins, what have you got for us tonight?
Well, Mr. President, a couple of quick reminders. The City of Temecula Youth Musical Theater proudly presents 13, the musical. It's Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, August 11th through the 13th. Some of the local talent in the show are Eva Sernowski, who we heard earlier, also young Jack Swank. And Beja Jungus, Sean Barnett. So looking forward to seeing them. And also, August 17th through the 27th, The Barn Stage Company is bringing Broadway to Temecula with one of my son's childhood favorites, the classic tale of James and the Giant Peach. There's plenty of arts and culture for all ages here in Old Town. So for more on the 2017-2018 Old Town Temecula Community Theater season, copies of the brochure are actually available outside of the council chambers or at city facilities, and of course, online at temeculapresents.org. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Kevin. Aaron, anything from the executive director tonight?
Nothing tonight, Mr. President.
General Manager, whatever we call you tonight?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Do we have any further directive reports?
Nope.
Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move adjournment.
Second. Any objection?
Uh-uh.
We are adjourned.
All right, we are now convening as the Temecula Public Financing Authority, and we can see that we have four directors here with Mayor Pro Tem Ron absent. And do we have any public comments? We do not. Okay, so, moving on to the consent calendar, we have item number 14, approve the action minutes of July 25, 2017.
Move approval.
Second.
And consent calendar is approved for two, with four and with one absent. Anything, Executive Director?
Nothing tonight.
And directors, anything?
Nope.
All right, then, we're going to adjourn this meeting until August 22, which is the next regularly scheduled meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, so now, we're going to reconvene the Temecula City Council and going to a public hearing. Any person may submit written comments to the city council before a public hearing or may appear and be heard in support of or in opposition to the approval of the projects at the time of the hearing. If you challenge any of the projects in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the city clerk at or prior to the public hearing. Item number 15, adopt the 2016 Transportation Uniform Mitigation Fee, or TUMF, Program Nexus Study, update an updated fee schedule. So could we have a staff report?
Madam Mayor, just real quick point of order, if I may ask the city attorney a quick question.
Sure.
Mr. Thorson, as you know, I sit on the Executive Committee for WR cog, sent there on behalf of this council. And for approximately two years, I participated and gave my input on the Nexus Study for the WR cog, for the TUMF program. About three or four months ago, attorney for WR cog, just opining that it might be just better if I abstained from participating in discussions on the WR cog level because of my many interests throughout the county as it relates to my company, who does a lot of project management for developers who would eventually have to pay TUMF fees. It's always been our philosophy, guided by you, Mr. City Attorney, and all my 18, 19 years, to not only take the high road, but to take the higher road. And so, my first question to you is, number one, based on what I told you, do I need to abstain? Number two, is even if I have a one project in Temecula, do I need to abstain?
I don't believe that you do. The problem with the WR cog on the county level is that you had so many projects in the county area, and that was the basis for the attorney's decision that you need to abstain. Here, this is a limited TUMF. It's only for the City of Temecula, and the fact that you may have one project, I don't think is enough to put you over the limit and require that you abstain. You're certainly welcome to if you feel that, you know, as you say, you take the higher and higher road, but as a legal matter, I don't think you've met the criteria to be required to abstain or to step aside.
So, in the event I choose to abstain this evening, does that get into any quorum problems?
No, you have three members here tonight. You need three votes to adopt the ordinance, and so, if you chose to abstain, there would be a quorum to enable that to be adopted.
My preference is to stay consistent, but are you, do you have a problem as well? I...
I don't have a problem with what you're saying, but I too have interests throughout the county. For the record, I have no interest other than my residence in the City of Temecula. So I think if you're wishing to abstain as a matter of caution because of the project you have in Temecula, that would not affect me. If there are issues otherwise in the county, then I might conceivably have the same issue that you have, so.
Again, for both of you, based on the attorney for WR cog, their opinion, it's that, you know, potential clients would be affected by the increase in the TUMF, and the fact that you had many clients in the county area, that's a, would, they considered that to be a significant impact on those clients. If you're not collecting, if you don't have a lot of clients in Temecula, you don't have the same set of facts that justify it.
And if I may, maybe this will help you out a little bit. Because I do things countywide, there's a general dynamic that it could be presumed that I would vote against raising the fee because it would be in the best interests of my clients to do so. And rather than, I didn't, frankly, I thought I, I didn't think I had to abstain with the WR cog advice, but, but you know what? Rather than, you know, create an appearance of impropriety, it was the best thing to do. I think just having holdings, and Mr. City Attorney, because I have holdings as well, I don't think that that rises to that level because there's, that dynamic is missing of representation. Is that, would that be a fair?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. If my colleagues wouldn't mind, I'd like to stay consistent. Because I did it on the county level, and so I might as well follow through here on this level as well.
Yeah, if I may follow up. I have no problem with that as it relates to me. For the record, I have no clients. That's not what I do. So, so that's not an issue for me, so.
Okay, so, Mr. City Attorney and Madam Mayor, just to stay consistent, while I do agree with your opinion, Mr. City Attorney, just to stay consistent, I'm going to go ahead and recuse myself from this item. I'll step off of the dais and leave the room.
That's fine.
All right, thanks.
That's fine, and thank you for the clarification. So we are good to move forward, so could we have a staff report, please?
Yes. Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. I'll be presenting to you a report on the 2016 Transportation Uniform Mitigation Fee, or TUMF Nexus Study, and the updated fee schedule. The TUMF fee, which is a mitigation fee to enlarge the capacity of the regional system of highways and arterials in Western Riverside County, and that network of roads is referred to as the TUMF network. I'll have a slide for you in just a moment that shows you the extent of the TUMF network, and as you can see, several of the segments included in the network are within the City of Temecula. The program administrator is WR cog, Western Riverside Council of Governments, and the way the program works is the fee is actually collected by the individual cities, and then those funds are remitted to WR cog, which distributes the funds to projects that are included in the various transportation improvement programs for implementation. The initial program was adopted by the WR cog Executive Committee in 2002, in November of 2002, and the City of Temecula adopted ordinance number 03-01 to implement that first fee study in, on May 28 of 2003. Here is the regional system of highways and arterials that is included within the TUMF program. And as you can see, we're in the southwest zone, the lower portion of the network, and you can see the number of road segments and interchanges, intersections that are included and funded by this program. The total cost of implementation of this overall TUMF network is estimated to be approximately $3.76 billion, and the amount of that that's actually funded by the fee that's collected through this program is $2.71 billion. There was a second major update to the TUMF network that was done in 2009 that was entitled the Transportation Uniform Mitigation Fee Nexus Study 2009 Update. That was adopted by the WR cog Executive Committee on October 5 of 2009, and the City of Temecula adopted ordinance number 10-02, effective on March 26 of 2010, adopting that 2009 Nexus Study. The 2016 Nexus Study, which we're discussing this evening, is the third comprehensive review of the TUMF program. This review was actually started in 2015, however, it was delayed to include the SCAG 2016 Regional Transportation Plan and Sustainable Community Strategy Growth Forecasts. It does include a comprehensive review of the overall TUMF network, including reviewing of all the costs of the facilities included in the program and the way that the estimates of the cost of construction of those facilities was done. So there was a very comprehensive review of the overall network, cost of all the facilities, and how those costs were distributed to various land use types. So the TUMF Nexus Analysis, that Nexus Analysis is a reasonable relationship between the future growth and need for improvements to the TUMF system. The 2016 Nexus Study was adopted by the WR cog Executive Committee on July 10 of 2017, and your council will be holding your public hearing this evening to adopt ordinance, and ordinance which would then become effective on November 1 of 2017. I'll have a slide for you in just a moment to show you what the actual updated fees will be, but there are a couple of significant aspects to the fee schedule that was adopted by the WR cog Executive Committee. One of those was the fee for retail commercial uses was actually reduced to $7.50 a square foot. And because of the fact that that fee was reduced from $10.49 a square foot to $7.50 a square foot, it was made effective immediately upon adoption by the WR cog Executive Committee, so on July 11 of 2017, that fee became effective. The other significant aspect is the fee for single-family residential will be frozen at its current level for the first two years, so for the next two years, the current fee amount of $8,873 per dwelling unit will be held constant, so that'll be the fee for single-family residential for the next two years. Then the fee increase will be phased in over the following two years, so the, beginning in 2019, the fee for single-family residential would go up to $9,149 per unit, and then beginning in 2020, it would go up to what its full amount would be based on the Nexus Study of $9,418. So here you can see what the fees, the current fee amounts shown in the column at the left of the slide, those are the current amounts of the program. Those were adopted based on the 2009 Nexus Study. With this 2016 Nexus Study, the fee amounts would begin in 2018 with the amounts you see in the second column. That includes holding that single-family residential fee current at its current amount of $8,873. Adjusted amounts for multifamily residential and industrial, the reduction in the retail fee to $7.50 a square foot, and an increase in the service commercial fee to $4.56 a square foot. Then moving into 2019, same fee for single-family residential and multifamily, same fees for the other uses, again, with the retail fee being held constant. In 2020, the fee for single-family residential would have its first incremental increase to $9,146, and then in 2021, up to its full amount based on the Nexus Study of $9,418. So those would be the fees that you would see being in place for the next four years. So tonight, following your public hearing, the council will be asked to adopt an ordinance amending the Chapter 1508 of the Temecula Municipal Code to implement the new Nexus Study, and also adopting a resolution to implement the fee schedule that would be adopted through that resolution, and those fees would then become effective on November 1 of 2017. That concludes the staff report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. Also, I mentioned there's a representative from WR cog here in the audience, if you have any questions for him as well.
Okay, great. Do any of you have comments or questions? Any question? All right. So then, I'm going to open the public hearing and ask if we have any public comments. We do not, so I'm going to say, if you have any public comments or would like to comment on this TUMF Nexus Study, please come forward and do so now. Going once, going twice. All right, then, we are going to close the public hearing, and I will take council comments. And I don't see anybody in the queue.
Will we introduce the ordinance under 15.1?
Okay, so a motion and a second. And Peter, what do you need to do?
I'll read it. This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Temecula amending Chapter 15.08, Western Riverside County Transportation Uniform Mitigation Fee Program, and finding this action exempt from SEQA.
All right, so we have a motion and a second, and everyone's casting their votes. With Councilmember Nigar abstaining, we have three, and Mayor Pro Tem Matt Ron is not here, so that is three with one abstention and one absence.
And Madam Mayor, I'd like to move the resolution 15.2.
Okay.
Second.
Motion and a second for 15.2. And Peter?
I don't need to read that.
Don't need to read that one?
Yeah, just the motion.
Madam, a voice vote would be fine.
All right, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And let the record reflect, also three in favor, one absent, and one abstention. Excellent, thank you. Okay, we have board and commission reports. I heard somebody mention a swank member of the family.
Pretty swanky.
My kids are everywhere.
Pretty swanky.
They've grown up with TCSD, so they're everywhere. Good evening, Madam Mayor. Just a couple of quick items tonight. I do have a slide here of the summer food service program. This is something that we started this year. It's a pilot program, and we partnered with USDA and the California Department of Education to provide free meals to our disadvantaged youth. And I went out and sort of watched this a couple different days, and really just blown away. Our children attend Temecula Elementary School, and we saw a lot of the families from that area that attend TES, having lunch, enjoying the park, and even on the special needs day, which was this past Thursday, just truly a great day.
Needs Day, which was on this past Thursday, um, just truly a great day. I talked to, uh, Jacob Maldonado. He said they've served 603 lunches this summer, um, all free, and, uh, and in no cost to the city. Those are all fully reimbursed, uh, to the city through the USDA. So, that's just a really great program. I, from Yvette and her team to Charles Walker and his team, it's nice to see, like, the interns out there working with, uh, community services staff and, and under Director Hawkins' view, but it was just a great, uh, it's a great program to see happening, and I really hope we continue that. And then this past Saturday, we had, uh, the Margarita Recreation Center workshop that we attended. Um, there was a really diverse group of folks there. There were, there were teachers there, there were, there was some city staff on hand, there were residents, um, there were advocates there. There was just, it was just a really, a nice mix of folks. Um, we had a really good conversation about, uh, what people want to see at the, the Margarita Recreation Center, what they liked there, what they disliked, what they'd like to see for future use. Another, just a really positive day in the community, listening to folks, and I had participated in, in another workshop, so I just sort of walked around and listened to, uh, what everyone had to say, and it was really interesting. You have a lot of people that have a lot of, uh, a lot of pride, obviously, in their community and want to see, uh, the best things in, in their neighborhood, so it was just a really good day. And so, uh, thanks to all the city staff that was on hand. It was sort of all hands on deck that day, right? So, um, Erica ran, um, Bob with RJM did another fantastic job. He's done a lot of projects in our city, so it was just another, uh, a good workshop.
Great, thank you, Zach. And, and on, on the food distribution program, another, another TCSD home run. Yeah, excellent.
Without a doubt.
Thank you. Mr. Telesio, how are you?
Thank you for asking. I'm fine. How are you?
Good.
Um, even more so because, uh, it's my pleasure to announce that the planning commission is alive and healthy, and actually had five public hearings at our last meeting.
Wow.
And one of those, I'll tell you about three of them. One of those is a redo of the town center. Temecula Town Center after, uh, mm, 17 years, I guess. We did ano- we did one in 2005, and I guess they wanted to try again with something more, more, uh, current, so we approved that project. Um, the, uh, mystery land at the corner of Loma Linda and Pachanga Parkway, which we've seen many iterations of over the many years, has come up with something good. The applicant has applied with a condo, single-family project, which I think will meet your approval. We recommended an approval to you for final looksee, but I think it's gonna stick this time.
Great.
And the, uh, the slide up at the top, I'd like to elaborate a little bit on, on our, one of our other public hearings. It has to do with the, the new tenant in the old Sizzler Building. I don't know how many of you have been by there and maybe seen the sign and, and shocked and grabbed your pearls because the language is a little bit strange, but there's a backstory to it, and I'd like to tell you what that is. This is the, uh, Bastards American Canteen Restaurant. They have another restaurant in Downey, which has been successful, and this one seems to be going well, too. The background on it is the fact that, uh, you see the shield up there. All of the principals and the, most of the people that work there are veterans of combat. Their unit is displayed on the screen above from Camp Pendleton originally. They're still there, and these folks have, uh, been members, most of them at least, have been members of the unit that took the most hits in, in, in Iraq during that period. And as an unabashed recommendation, as far as I'm concerned, uh, I would, I would do anything to support that kind of enterprise, and these guys are well worth it. So, if you've got, if you're hungry, you want to go by and have some good food and say hello to them, do that, because, uh, they earned it. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Telesio. Mr. Pegel, good evening.
Nothing tonight, nothing tonight, Madam Mayor.
Nothing?
Nothing, no.
Oh, my goodness. Well, you know, backing up just a little bit, when, when we did the State of the City in May, we knew that the Bastards Restaurant was coming, and I worked with staff, and I said, "How am I gonna talk about this Bastards Restaurant?" And then as soon as you hear the backstory on it, you realize that these guys are in it for the long haul and for all the right reasons. So, I would really encourage anyone, uh, you know, if you like great food, you need to go, go there and eat, but anyone who wants to support the military and honor the employees of this, this place and the founders of this, uh, restaurant for what it is that they do for the military, you need to go by and support them, see them, and, and thank them. And so, I'm gonna be going by later this week. So, uh, and I didn't have to use the word bastards during the State of the City, because we just used a graphic, so. Um, but n- now that we know the backstory, really, it's an honor to have them in Temecula, and we're so glad that they chose us. So, Mr. Comertero, anything?
No.
Nope.
I'm ready to hear from, uh, city chairman.
Stu, anything? Nope. All right.
Madam Mayor, just a couple of updates real quick. Um, the Temecula Parkway interchange will continue with its nighttime closures for construction this week and next week. Uh, you can check the website or call the hotline for specific times and details. Again, these closures will, will be at night. Several residential neighborhoods throughout the city are being slurry sealed. Harvestin' is done. Woodcrest and Promenade neighborhoods are in progress. Crown Hill has begun, and Wolf Creek is next. Some of the connector roads adjacent to those neighborhoods are also being slurry sealed. Date Street is almost done. Maraga Road is on the screen. That photo is from actually this morning. Also, the entire length of La Serena Road and Solana Road are in progress this week and next. And finally, this is another Measure S project. The same company that installed turf at Gillette Stadium, where the New England Patriots play, uh, has installed new turf at all four of the city soccer fields at Bird's Saw Sports Park. This $1.7 million project will be ready for players at the end of this month. Uh, we did have a slight delay with the weather and rain lately, but it will be well worth the wait. And Madam Mayor, that is all I have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, and, and word has it that the new formulation of the turf helps us keep the fields even cooler than before. Much cooler is what I heard.
Yeah, I think synthetic turf's come a long way, and it's gonna be state of the art.
Yeah, excellent. Okay, so, Peter, anything?
Uh, we had a closed session tonight. We have no, uh, uh, action items to report under the Brown Act from the closed session.
Okay, nothing under closed session, so...
Move approval.
I will put the motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and we stand adjourned.